You have a. Okay. All. It's the. It's. P L. Four. And step. All right. Yeah. Uh. It's. Operating. Edition. It's will. Me. Are you start? About. Great. Uh. Is there. So now. Her. See it. I'll see. Age of. Month.
Um, so the whole shot, I.
Seeing that. Was it. See.
Was our blood drive, so he wants to thank the varsity club and the natural order society for hosting the club.
Also.
And then finally, uh, varsity club will be, um, hoping to host boys volleyball's first home game tomorrow after.
First.
We have some additional pride that I want to share with folks. Uh, first we would like to just just. We would.
Here.
Highlight some of the students, uh, that participated in the, uh, kids' bar challenge over at North Park Elementary School. And you can see there are little turbs there. Uh, those are our future doctors. Then we wanted to recognize, uh, just a good, that's recognition for one of our winners.
Yeah.
Uh, a number of winners, uh, across the district. And if you didn't have an opportunity, um, I actually partnered with Roman who put me on a spinning, some sort of spinning device explaining to me the physics behind it, which was, uh, a little daring on my part, nevertheless a lot of fun. Um, so I do want to recognize a number of students, uh, from F D R. First place was Nathaniel Conroy. We had second place Hunter Zubostowski. Uh, third place, we have Visa Sakatowa. Uh, at Pavland Middle School, we have first place Ben Hicks. Uh, second place, Annabelle Batson. Third place, we have Paul Resch. Uh, honorable mention for Alexander Glass. Uh, in our elementary schools, uh, fifth grade, first place, we had Sophia Nash. Uh, second place, we had Chloe, uh, Sur- 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 Chee- Sochiya, uh, excuse me. Uh, third place, we had Gavin Cuttita and honorable mention for Madison, uh, Grovet and Mark Anthony Glass. And I just want to give a special shout out to, um, Kim Niesel, our director for, for STEAM. Um, and her entire team that participated in putting that event together. It was well attended. Uh, everyone had a great time. The families, every time I stop by one of the stations, the families just acknowledged how exciting the, the tribune were and even the families were engaged in some of the sessions. So, uh, kudos to, uh, Kim and her team. Uh, we also want to recognize Mary Ellen Scott, uh, F D R track. I saw her yesterday, uh, just practicing around F D R. And I just couldn't believe how fast she would. She says she's just, just warming up. Uh, amazing accomplishment. Takes two section, uh, non-champions, uh, championships, three hundred meter and the six hundred meter. That was a little too soon. Uh, but the next, uh, point of pride, uh, is kind of dovetailing off what, uh, President Zoroski shared with the Big Fish, uh, production that's coming, uh, very soon, uh, to, uh, theater at F D R, uh, soon. I know I wasn't perfect. I know my life was small. I know that I pretended that I knew it all. But why you tell my story? And I hope somebody does. And then for me, it's one day bigger than I want. It ends with suns. It ends with lights. It ends with loving land of paper pens. We paint our lives. Go like God. And let me go. Show me ways and let them flow. It all ends well. This much I know. I know I wasn't perfect. I know my life was small. Uh, first you take it, make sure you do so, uh, because it's going to be great, great event. Our kids. Why you tell my story? And I hope so. Just want to thank, um, Melinda Dimeo, uh, as well as all of our, uh, parents, um, that are involved in helping this production, uh, come, come to life. So thank you, thank you all that are involved in all of this. And at this point, I'm going to pass it over to our deputy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We like to celebrate continuing celebrations. We have our artist of the month, Julia Thompson, who is a fifth grader at North Park Elementary. You can see her beautiful artwork displayed there. And Julia says what she enjoys most about creating art is that you can turn anything into this simple experience. Next, we have our musician of the month, Adriana Atkins, also fifth grade from Violet Avenue School. And you can see.
Heard there with her, uh, violin. She says, I really like orchestra because my sister played the violin and she inspired me. Yeah. Impressed. She would play in the house and it sounded really beautiful and it made me realize I wanted to be a violinist when I grew up. So congratulations to both of them.
Sure. He's a tiny kid.
Any other pride?
Um, I have a couple. Today I was able to go to Netherwood. We didn't mention it, right? Um, so the Netherwood fifth graders did persuasive speeches, um, which is part of the curriculum, but they did kind of, everybody did their speeches and then they voted and narrowed it down to the top eight, I think. And so the top eight speeches presented today and we got to go and listen to their persuasive speeches. It was really impressive that fifth graders not only stood up there and could, you know, speak to an audience on a stage, but they were able to, um, have an opinion, support the opinion with facts, um, represent the opposing view, right? Which is what we want kids to do. That's part of that critical thinking. So I just think it's important for people to know that this is what kids are doing. They're picking an opinion and really looking at both sides. And one of the pros and cons and some of the topics were, uh, should there be uniforms in schools? There's a lot about social media. One was about finances for kids, kids getting an allowance. So some great topics. And the students did a really nice job. Um, so that was, that was really nice to see. And then the other thing was there was a successful blood drive today at F D R. Um, my understanding is they surpassed their goal. Uh, there was fifty pints of blood collected for, uh, New York Blood Center. So, um, really important stuff.
Any other pride?
Volunteers.
Just want to check, are we good with the sound? Everything's good? Okay. All right, moving on to seven point one, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of updates. Um, want to dovetail off of the things that Margaret shared. Uh, I, I, no, I, I, I just want to recognize first and foremost, there, there's a lot of things happening in the district behind the scenes that sometimes folks don't get credit for. And I just want to take a moment just to say, you know, we, we truly see it. We truly appreciate everybody, uh, everybody's effort. Um, there's a, there's many students who have been supportive over the past, you know, um, several, several weeks, uh, months, families that have been supported in dealing with losses. Um, and just our community, our school community is coming together to pull resources together for families, to support students. And it's just a testament to the commitment that this district, um, is a family and, and everyone is, is supporting, uh, and keeping, keeping kids, um, in the forefront. And so I just truly appreciate, um, everything that's happening district wide. And, um, and also want to recognize, um, one of our guests here today. She's not actually a guest. She should be, you know, part of the board, um, but Bobby Goodman, uh, Bobby Goodman. She was, but Bobby Goodman. Uh, put together two events that were highlighted with gowns and shoes and then the blood drive. Which was my first time ever donating blood. And I have to say that the kids were made. So I just, I just really appreciate all the things that are happening in our district. And this work can be done alone is truly collective effort. I just truly appreciate, uh, all the work that's going in to make sure our student experience is a positive one. Um, lastly, I do want to share that, uh, Mr. Wellen, I did meet with our student leader from high school, um, regarding the event for the end of the year. We'll be communicating with family to, uh, of our students. Um, they were very vocal in our meeting. This is our second meeting. They have shared their thoughts. Um, and I truly appreciate, um, the work that they're, they're, they're engaged in to make sure that we still, we're hearing them. Uh, we want to keep the, uh, keep an honor tradition to the extent possible, while at the same time balancing the construction project timeline. And it's a very difficult one. And so, um, I just truly appreciate their input. Uh, we came to consensus on all the items that we presented. And so that will be, uh, shared with families so that families are aware of the plans, uh, for June. Uh, and then, um, our connections newsletter was, uh, sent out this evening. Please take a look. A lot of great things happening. And, um, that concludes my items. President Zoroski. Thank you.
Anything from the cabinet or?
I think, I think we're good.
Okay.
I'd like to say, uh, just one thing. Uh, so, uh, tonight Nicole Arteta, our supervisor of transportation is here to, uh, provide an update and a presentation to the board. Her presentation does include a proposition for, uh, buses, a bus replacement plan. It doesn't include E V buses, uh, because the committee is meeting next week. And, uh, any proposal for E V buses will be brought forward to the board on March thirteenth as part of the budget presentation.
And what I just wanted to add was I was very impressed with the recent science fair. It's fantastic to see that and so forth and hear about that and see it on the website. You know, my wife is a retired science teacher and at St. Peters and a lot of those students would go on to the Hyde Park Science Fair. So it's great to see that, that that's still alive and well and so forth. And, and hearing Margaret talk about, uh, some of the things going on at the other schools and, and emphasizing the importance of accepting differences of opinion. That is so important as a former social studies teacher. So a lot of great things going on around the district.
Moving on to seven point two, multilingual learners highlights and program in review with Monica Contreras.
Um, good evening. Uh, is the presentation up?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. My name is Monica Contreras and I am the multilingual learner coordinator for the Hyde Park Central School District. So before we get started, um, let me just, okay, there we go. So before we get started, I organized some material for you to kind of reference as I am doing my presentation. It might help you just clarify some of the terms that I'm using, um, some about legality. So if you don't have time for anyone, I should have fifteen here and I'll explain to you what's in that little packet. So the first document is what, um, So the first document is what, um, so when you're thinking of where do we place multilingual learners? How many minutes do we do? How do we service them? This is the Part 154 document from New York State. It's not an encouragement, it's not something that should we do. It's what we are legally responsible to follow in order for us to serve our, service our multilingual learners. So I made a copy for you. You have the K eight and then you have the nine twelve. Um, you guys can keep that. I also organized for you just a little one pager, a Snapchat of, um, our program and our enrollment. In the first part, in the first page, you'll see our secondary schools, name of the school, how many teachers we have there, how many students we have, our special level. It's mine, I may see right now, that's the information I'm gonna give you. So I'm telling you the terms and supporting, um, so in the back of the page, you'll see the same information for our elementary students. I am so honored to work the Hyde Center this, so as always, we start with our vision. It's a tool in the piece we choose first as a fun. When we meet, when we collaborate, when we teach, the managers, um, we understand what is the matter for them. Thank you. So I always, you know, I truly innovate, learn, perform for all. Alright. So for our, and it's a presentation, I want to first highlight in our, certain terms that you know we have on multilingual.
Well, back when I was a student, I am a former English language trainer myself. Um, the program used to be called EFL, English as a Second Language. Through data, research, um, talking to the students. New York State realized, New York State realized that a lot of our students coming in, English was not their first language. So English as a Second Language didn't really go with them. They switched the term to English as a new language, that's ENL. In this presentation, you're gonna hear me use ENL, ELL. And I just wanna bring our clarity to that. So English as a new language just incorporates all of our students who are multilingual. English might-
English might not be their second language. Um, ELL, you'll hear me say the word L's is English Language Learners. So I just wanna bring some clarity to that 'cause you'll hear me say our ENL program and our L's, um, and that's what that means. So who are, uh, multilingual learners? I'm actually coming from Saratoga. I was in a conference there today. And, uh, one of the presenters said, "Define multilingual learners this way," and it resonated with me, so I wanna share it with you. She said, "Multilingual learners refers to all children and youth who are or have been consistently exposed to multiple languages." I never heard that term like that, that definition, and it resonated with me because it's important to realize that L's, multilingual learners are not all immigrants. A lot of them were born here. So what they are, it truly are students whose first language is not English. Doesn't mean that they were not born here, doesn't mean that they might know some English. It's just that at home, their first language, when they were born little, their parents, it was not English. It could have been Italian, Russian, German, Spanish. So I really resonated with that because sometimes we forget that we think of L's and we automatically think of immigration, came from another country. Well, no, a lot of them, especially in Hyde Park, were born by the Dutch county and are part of our country. So I just wanted to highlight, New York State does, they still define multilingual learners as student whose primary language is not English. So what does that mean for our school? That means that a student comes in, they register. When they register, um, they know in the home language questionnaire, which every single parent fills out, that English was not their first language. That triggers a New York State identification process. It's a lot of information to get to where we're going. But, um, in that process, we interview the parents, we interview the student, we make a conscious decision and we culminate with a New York State identification test. Why is that test important? Leads me to my next point. This is why. They take the test and the test dictates what proficiency language is the child in. So if you wanna reference your laminated sheet, we have six levels. Entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding, and commanding. Commanding is divided in two years, commanding year one and commanding year two. I love the visual of the bicycle. So think of your toddler learning to ride a bike. They need a lot of support. Maybe you don't even let them go when they're entering and emerging. You know they're going to fall. So you're supporting them, you make sure the training wheels are really tight. You make sure everything is in place, their helmet's in place because they need your support. As they move on through the levels, transitioning, well, they're, you know, it's okay. You can let go a little bit, they still have some training wheels, they still have some support, but they can hold their own, their own. And then as they move on to expanding and commanding, they're on that rail trail doing their own thing independently, riding their bike. Um, the levels is, is what we, is how we place students, is how we offer our services. So when you are entering an emergency, an emergency, excuse me, an emerging, you do get more minutes than if you're transitioning, expanding, or commanding. The program that we have here in Hyde Park is called the ENL program. We follow a push-in, push-out, follow. If you're entering an emerging, that means that you have an ENL teacher pushing in into the detailed classes, the commanding level classes, and you're successful.
But you're also getting a period of a pull-out in which you are out of the classroom with other ENL students and the ENL teacher is supporting, giving instruction and helping you learn English. Um, the first two years, I love the basic calc, uh, research. The first two years, an L is learning that social language. You might hear them communicate very well with you. How are you, what after? Having conversations in the playground. But that commu-, that academic language is still not developed. So it takes five to seven years for a person to learn that new language. If you guys have any questions, just, uh- I love this slide. We have thirteen languages represented in our district. Um, it's beautiful, you can read there, Swahili, Tengger. I, myself, am learning so much just, um, letting, getting to know the parents and the students, learning different languages, don't test me, um, specifically Arabic. But I think it's beautiful, so I wanted to highlight all the languages that we have here in our district and how we support our parents. It is also a legal responsibility that all that communication that we give out is provided in your target language. So we have doc terms, we use, we will translate in Sky Elevate. Sky Elevate, right, new to our district, um, it's pretty cool. So it's an app on our copier. You have a document, um, you want it with a copier and it translates and we have the sixteen languages that are in our district there. So it's a support for the teacher, mostly for parent communication, those weekly newsletters or PTA flyers. So that's there for us. We have a language line, we also have live interpreters. Um, and with Miss Turner, she introduced a language pen, the Pocket Talk. So those are new, uh, devices that we have to support our parents and our teachers.
How do you do his work, I mean, can he, can he do it?
So the honest, 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 hit or miss. Um, the language pen is really good for the student. Um, they highlight the word and it tells them. So it helps just for awareness, I believe. The, the Pocket Talk, this thing's a hard, it's not as, it doesn't translate as well. Yes, so we're, we're still navigating, it's still a little bit not helping. But it gets the point across, at least the gist of what's being said, it does help. So some teachers use them and the call for Spanish. We have two in the district, so we're still learning. Um, so when it comes to the data, New York State, so when we think of data and multilingual learners and our NICE data, um, it's not as clear and organized as what we get from our New York State testing for ELLA exam. So for L's, our New York State test is the New York State English as a Second Language Strategic Test. This is a test that they take monthly here in May. It is treated as an adult state test, it is a state test. Um, and it measures how much English they learned in the school year. That's how they move from level to level. So whatever level they're in right now, in May, they'll take the test, will get their results in August, and that's how they move along in the program. Um, I do have to shout out Inocenter and Pascal because when we get back our NICE data results in August, it's very individualized. You only get the school, the list of kids, and your level. So to get that graph, I just wanted you guys to see where our L's kind of live here in Hyde Park. And they live in the expanding level, uh, which is amazing. Took some time, so I do wanna shout out Inocenter and Pascal for digging through the data, putting it together, um, for us to see. As the colors represent, I was there on the top. Most of our multilingual learners here at Hyde Park are performing at expanding level. So if you go back to your chart, that means that they're pretty proficient in English. Means that what we're doing is working. What we're doing in the classroom, the exposure that we're giving them to how to speak the language, read the language, listen to the language, is working. So, um, I would love to see how we perform like comparison to the state or comparison to local schools, 'cause our data is pretty solid. Uh, but we don't have that, they do not have that.
What's the actual, like, the total, what you're going from twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two, this stuff to work with? Number that represents how many times, so how many numbers are there?
So I don't have it in the top of my head, but twenty-twenty-one, so I believe it was like a hundred and seventy-three, um, a hundred and eighty, I believe. I shared numbers after one. So that's the enrollment of that year, how many L's we had in the whole district and how they were performing.
It seems like the root, the, the total number, so that it's, uh-
It's all or nothing, yeah. Um, yeah, so that means that we had a hundred and seventy-three L's, right? From the majority of the test studies.
And, and do you know how many L's that total were?
This year, two hundred and sixty. This data was also, um, we here at the district with the help of Inocenter and Pascal put this data together. So I wanted to show you guys, um, so our L's are taking the NICE once a year. And truly, how are they performing? So we select the six students across our district who demonstrate an average of what we're seeing in the data, and that's just it. So sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, you can see how every year they take the NICE class. Um, they perform highly. It's pretty difficult to go from entering to emerging, from emerging to transitioning. So in many cases, we go by the numeric number, the max is three hundred and nineteen. So even if our kid went, it's gonna say emerging, but made a fifteen-point road, that's still possible to us. So to go from band to band is pretty difficult. So we also value the numeric number on the card. Um, commanding, once you reach three hundred and nineteen, it means that you are no longer a multilingual learner, meaning you don't take the state test, but you still get two years of services. And that's where our data gets a little messy, where our Level One only counts entering to expanding, but in reality, we're still servicing those commanding kids. So if you go back to this chart, the commanding year one and year two, we're still giving them ninety minutes of service, um, for two years. And those numbers are not re-sent in our Level One test. Does anyone have a question? So last year, um, this is my first year here in Hyde Park. So last year, my position was a stipend position. Um, so I do want to take the time to just say cool and pay my respect to the person that did this work before me. Um, the position that you guys were in was pretty solid. So what were you guys doing? You guys were following the Part 154 guidance, you were meeting all your checkpoints. Um, and it was great. And I wanna highlight that the middle school was on a list because of the performance of the L's and they're no longer on a list. So I do want to pay respect to the work that was done before me. Um, you guys introduced the CEO by literacy, you have the one parent engagement event. Um, and then the numbers grew. And I decided to thankfully open my position. So where we are right now, year one for me and for our department, truly is setting-
Department truly is setting the foundation.
Um, it's super important that we understand here as a district, what is, who, who is a multilingual learner? How do we teach them and how do we track the data? That's the work that I'm doing this year, I'm still developing this year. So starting from registration, having your own stipend, providing professional development, every single bill, constantly helping teachers understand how to teach multilingual learners. Um, 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 sorry. Um, so as far as, as far as meeting our minutes and making sure this year I'm working on, not only meeting our minutes, because we were doing that, great check. But are we intentional? Is it okay to have twenty L's in one class? Is it okay to cluster so many L's in a certain proficiency? That might not be conducive to the learning. So we can continue to see the great data and the great, uh, progress in the NICE slot. So I'm working with all-
Working with building administrators to make sure our scheduling and the way we're structuring our classes, um, is intentional. That's the best word to use, is intentional. Um, the CEO by literacy, uh, I point to Liz Beck, 'cause she's one of our candidates. Uh, it was introduced last year. This year, we're making it part of, um, like a curriculum, a true pathway, developing a structure of what truly is the CEO by literacy. Um, this year is all about creating that system, that structure, that clean, strong foundation so that next year, we know exactly what to do, how to do it, and get better from there. Um, I'm so happy to announce that we're gonna have three parent engagement. Uh, we had one last year, this year we're going into three. Uh, and just developing a relationship with the Children's Home of Poughkeepsie, with our families, getting to know the students, getting to know the staff, you guys, and, and, and the school as a whole. Where are we going? Um, for me, is continuing that cultural responsive work. So this year is all NTSF, right? Like, tier one, we're introducing the terms, we're giving teachers, um, the toolbox, the toolkit. Well, next year, we're hitting the hard, the ground strong. Um, data for ENL and multilingual learners that I mentioned gets a little messy. So developing a system where we can track how many L's are coming in and truly graduating. Um, how many, how, how long does it take for them to pass certain region, state test? So kind of really looking at the data and organizing, because the state does not send that organized to us as clean as the New York State, um, math and ELLA exam. So that's work that's important and that's work that, um, we're doing. CEO by literacy, making a, a pathway, um, which means that looking at the ELLA curriculum and embedding the requirements already, um, the requirements needed to get the CEO by literacy so that our students that are going for it are not doing extra work. So making a part of their curriculum, starting as early as seventh grade. Um, I don't know, monthly professional development. I love doing professional development. I've been going to all of our schools. For what we're looking for, twenty-five, twenty-six, is, um, creating two things. Looking to every teacher, content teacher that's working with an ENL teacher, having that monthly, kind of like a boot camp, really building them to, to use the strategies to help multilingual learners. And then as a whole, continue to bring awareness to the district. Um, I'm super excited that we're on March fourteenth Superintendent Conference. Uh, we're gonna have some options, some multilingual learning options. We have a keynote speaker, uh, that's gonna come talk to us about engaging all students because- We have a keynote speaker, um, that's gonna come talk to us about engaging all student, because let's face it, what works for a multilingual learner, works for all students. Best strategies, best teaching, works for everyone. So super excited for March fourteen, um, just to continue to build our teachers' toolbox. Family engagement, we had our mandatory multilingual, multilingual learner, um, family meeting in September. I invite you all to our March sixth, we're collaborating with community schools. It is an event where simply come, have fun, mingle, communicate with others. It's gonna be love, positivity, and unity combined together. We have some, uh, students performing, um, we're gonna have great food and just a space to just take a breather. Um, with everything that's going on around, we just want to create a safe environment where we can come together and be proud, be proud of, of who we are. So I invite you all, it's March sixth, it will take place in High Park Elementary School at six P M. Um, and then I also invite you to our annual M L L family engagement night at, at the, um, Sping Balls in Poughkeepsie. That is my, May sixteen, uh, sixteen. So you probably heard about the C O by literacy, this is not new to you, but I just wanted to, um, kind of say a couple of more things. So a C O by literacy certifies a student, kind of gives the C O and says that student is bilingual, that student can read, write, listen, um, all the modalities in multiple languages. Uh, we had it last year, which is great, I believe, two students received it last year. We have ten students this year, I'm so pumped. Uh, what the students are doing is we have a panel of teachers, um, they go through an application process, we accept them. They tell us why they want to pursue the C O by literacy, um, for the next six weeks. They get assigned a mentor, this year I'll be mentoring them, and we work in a project, whatever they want, open to their creativity, in which they are showcasing what being bilingual means to you. They are going to present the project, um, in their target language, right now we have Spanish and French. Um, and then, uh, and then at graduation, you'll see them with their, with their.
Courts.
With their courts, with their courts, and they get a C O, extra C on their diploma. And Lizbeth is one of our, our candidates, so you want to tell them why you want to pursue the C O by literacy.
So I, um, I remember hearing of the C O by literacy, and actually the beginning of this year. And I thought, you know, it was, it's kind of like a nice way of representing how much we've really learned through the years with language. Now, I myself, I, my first language was Spanish, but, you know, you can always learn more. So I continued my Spanish, um, learning all the way up to my senior year. Um, so I decided to, you know, it kind of inspired me to do the C O by literacy, because it's kind of a representation of all the years of hard work we've gone through, learning the Spanish language and expanding our vocabulary. And not e, not just that, but the people I, you know, did that journey with, uh, it's really kind of like a family. Like in my Spanish class, we call each other like family.
Little Brentford school.
Yeah, because, you know, um, you really achieve something, learning a new language, because I see it not only as a way to expand yourself, but also to help other people, because, you know, the, and where we live, you know, there's not just one language. So I think it's a really good way to kind of expand ourselves and be helpful to our community.
Thank you. I want to highlight in your essay, she also, um, mentioned her family, how the C O by literacy would just bring such honor to her parents, to hear her, she had never had the opportunity to present in Spanish, um, to speak about what that culture and what her parents kind of embedded in her. So it's, it's pretty beautiful. I'll send out the invitation, you guys are welcome to come. Um, I know our French student, he, he's amazing, too. He was the president of the French program here. He is ready to tell you why he wants to earn this C O. Um, so that's pretty awesome work that we're doing there. Uh, all right, so this is the end of the presentation, and then I'm here for questions, if you guys have questions. Wait, pause this. Thank you. Um, these are two students that I'm new to the district, so I'm getting to know the students, I'm getting to know their, what they like. But I wanted to showcase these two particular students. One, the male, if you go back to the chart, he is in the commanding piece, so you'll, you'll hear how well his English is. He learned English in our school district, so he came in, we're not speaking English. And then our young lady here, she is emerging. So she'll be a little bit more quiet, you'll see some, some, you know, her accent is a little stronger, um, you'll see. So I hope you enjoy the venue.
The one thing, well, for me, as I'm from another country, this was an early experience for me, so.
My biggest challenge was learning English when I was trying to understand people at home.
Well, when you come from another country, you need to know the language, because and then you can get a job, uh, because you have to talk to people. Then buy stuff and install from everything, because, you know, I think not everybody speaks your own language.
And working in a life experience, you know, helping me complete my job, my schoolwork, make new friends.
I think, uh, where this experience was for me was people from other countries like me, but like, not only Mexican people, just like all different, um, countries. And made friends, they know how was, how it's like in other countries and new cultures.
One experience I still remember, though, is when I was in middle school, and I didn't understand what the teacher told me was two plus two, when I got home, started flying after.
Uh, first of all, the first week, um, for me, I think being someone who makes effort twice, because it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work to learn a whole language. Well, for me, it was, because, you know, we're going to just Spanish, so. I hope it is praise.
Me being a multilingual makes me different than everybody else. I like that.
All right. You guys have any questions?
Hmm.
Thank you.
Very good.
Much, yeah.
That was just really a great way to explain a very complicated program. I mean, it was, it was easy to understand, and I really appreciate you connecting actual students with terms on a page, right? It just, it just made it so clear to understand where an emerging student is, where a commanding student is, and that we have students who in our district who are commanding because of the instruction that they're getting here, which is really exciting. So thank you. Well done.
And I, I would say again, it's, it's so good to see that, you know, these students are, you know, commencing and so forth, they're learning English and so forth, to help them in the future. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's such a challenge these days, not only with the, um, the NICE SLA, but also the state assessments and so forth. The biggest challenge, it would seem, is, you know, you make a budget, you make, you put your resources in place, and then you get new entrances during the year. So the only thing I would ask is how many new students during the year? Because then, you know, you have to test, you have to provide the services, just in general, how many new students during the middle of the year?
Um, this year, and I don't have, I, I can get you the information, but Miss Turner, but this year we have about, from September to now, I believe, eleven students. So here at High Park, we're unique in the sense that our fields, our enrollment throughout the year is the Children's Home of Poughkeepsie.
Right.
So they have, um, their long-term foster care program for unaccompanied youth, it's a long title. Um, and they just receive students all the time. Um, they raise their beds, they call it their enrollment, to thirty six. So right now, um, they are at fourteen, but they're looking to fill all thirty six beds. And that's, that's our challenge here. So we do budget, we do strategize, we do open certain classes. And example, what's happening right now is that we, we budgeted or we planned for three sessions of E L A that are now filled because the kids continue to come. So it is a challenge, um, that is fueled by the Children's Home of Poughkeepsie, so we've paid it. So I, I do want to say thank you to the, what, you know, Dr. Roman and Ms. Turner are doing to just help alleviate that challenge and kind of thinking on, on our feet, because that's kind of where we are. So for next year, we need to open a couple of more sessions, because we already know what's coming. They're still funded, we know thirty six more kids are coming, so that's.
That's what I'm thinking, it's not just the new kids coming in, but if you look at some, if I'm, I'm looking at some of these caseloads, um, and there are some, there are some heavy caseloads, like at Violet Avenue, thirty five, more than half of the students at Violet Avenue are in that entering, emerging, or transition, right? So they're gonna need more hours, um, that's a really heavy caseload.
Yeah, and those are, are incoming kids, like the incoming kids that came in. Also, um, if you are a multilingual learner in High Park, and let's say you live in another world area, uh, you go to Violet. So that's why those numbers are high, too. So our, our programs are in Violet and in North Park Elementary School, so you'll see that increase there.
Sure. I mean, it's, it's so complex, obviously, to that point. I mean, I know one district that had twenty five new E N L students show up on the first day of school.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, the budgeting part is so essential to that and so forth. But, um, you know, the other part of it that's very interesting, I found, because I work in school, is just because you're Hispanic, doesn't mean you speak Spanish.
Correct, yes. My kids.
And, uh, then the other end of it is, I, I get a lot of Hispanic kids who speak fluent Spanish, and then they still have to take the Spanish class. And in some cases, and they say, this is silly, why are we doing this?
Yeah.
So, you know, there's the New York State rules that have to be navigated, so thank you for helping with.
No problem.
Easy.
Thank you. Moving on to seven point three, our transportation proposition and updates with, uh, Nicole Arteta.
So, good evening, everyone, my name is Nicole Arteta, I'm the supervisor for transportation. Um, tonight, I would like to start our presentation by just, um, providing a slide of a, just a snapshot of what our department looks like. So as you can see, we cover a lot of ground. We travel about seven thousand nine hundred and three miles every day, which is one million four hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-one miles per year. We're also putting in some serious time behind the wheel, driving about three hundred and forty-six hours every day, which is, um, sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight hours every school year behind the wheel. We're transporting three thousand four hundred and eighty-one students every day. Um, and right now, our, um, transportation team is made up of a hundred and twenty-five employees. We have about six vacancies right now, and approximately six or seven people right now that are out on leave of absence. So as you can see, these numbers just give you a good idea of how big our transportation department is and how much, how important the work is we do for our students in this district.
Um, so as Linda said, this bus replacement plan, um, does not include any E V. Um, right now, we're just looking at one seven-passenger minivan, one thirty, uh, passenger van, one wheelchair accessible van, and four sixty-six passenger, uh, big buses. So the total for those bus purchases would be, um, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand seventy-five dollars. And then we get a fifty-eight point four percent, um, state aid, bring our net cost to four thousand and five, or.
Four.
Four hundred and five thousand, uh, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Anybody have any questions about that before I continue on? Um, next, I would like to introduce everybody to our, um, two new head bus drivers. These are, uh, newly created positions for the school year. They were designed to strengthen our transportation team and to enhance the safety and efficiency of our operations. So I would like to introduce Linda Lawler. Um, Linda will be leading our efforts in ensuring compliance with all of our state regulations related to school transportation. This is a vital role that keeps our buses safe, our drivers informed, and our district aligned with all necessary guidelines. Linda's expertise will be instrumental in maintaining the highest standards of safety and compliance. Then I would like to introduce Colleen Lawrence. Colleen will be leading the development and implementation of our new comprehensive training program for, uh, bus drivers and monitors. This program focuses on best practices, safety procedures, and ongoing professional development, equipping our drivers and monitors with the skills and knowledge they need to excel in their roles.
Nathan. Hi. So, as a district, we are focusing on improving student attendance and a key factor in the reliability and positivity of our transportation system. We believe that by continuing to invest in our transportation team, we can maintain and even improve our already strong performance. We want to ensure kids get to school and, and that starts with a strong and motivated transportation team. This slide outlines how we're doing that. We're tackling this from a couple of angles, recognition and communication. First, we're ramping up our employee recognition programs. We want to celebrate the great work our transportation team does every day, work that's clearly reflected in our low, low absenteeism rate. One example is our Good News Gram initiative, which will be a fun way to acknowledge outstanding attendance, safety records, and other positive contributions. We want to show our team that their hard work is valued and appreciated. We believe that recognized employees are motivated employees, and motivated employees contribute to smoothly running departments. Second, we're prioritizing two-way communication. We need to hear from our transportation employees, we're creating systems to make it easy for them to share feedback. This includes regular staff meetings to discuss challenges and successes, suggestion boxes for on-the-spot ideas, and anonymous surveys to ensure everyone feels comfortable sharing their thoughts. Importantly, we're not just collecting feedback, we're going to measure the response rate to that feedback, to make sure we're actually listening and responding to their needs and ideas. We want to create a culture where our transportation team feels heard and supported. The bottom line is this, by valuing our transportation team and providing them with the support they need through recognition and open communication, we can maintain and maybe even improve our attendance record and continue to provide a positive and reliable transportation experience for our students. This is the, the slide showing all of that. February is National Love the Bus Month, and we've had a fantastic time celebrating our team with the calendar full of events and special recognitions for everyone for the second year in a row. This is always a great opportunity to shine a spotlight on the incredible contributions of our transportation teams. Think about it, our bus drivers and transportation staff are often the first and last faces our students see each day. They play a vital role in ensuring our kids get to school safely and ready to learn. They set the tone for the entire school day, it's not just about the route, it's about the impact they have on students' days. This celebration aligns perfectly with our district-wide goal of improving attendance and reducing absenteeism. We know that reliable transportation is absolutely essential for students to be present in the classroom. If kids can't get to school, they can't learn. Our transportation team is a critical link in that chain. They're not just driving buses, they're driving student success. And I just want to add, tomorrow is flannel day, to add, Love the Bus Month, so everybody wear your flannel. Nice and cozy, comfy.
Colleen. Good evening, everyone. Um, we're gonna go into doing, in, introducing the new driver training program. And we're excited to introduce the launch of a new training program for bus drivers and monitors. These programs is a major investment in our transportation team. And it shows just how committed we are in safety and well-being of our students. We're not just talking about a quick orientation here. This is truly comprehensive program designed to equip our drivers, monitors with skills, knowledge, they need to excel in their roles. It all covers everything from defensive driving techniques, student management, emergency procedures, and best practices for communication. We wanna make sure they're prepared in anything and everything. And this isn't just for new hires. This program is va- valuable resource for all of our transportation members. From our newest recruits to our most experienced veterans. We believe in supporting your growth and development throughout their careers with us. Ongoing training, crucial for staying up to date in best practices, refreshing skills, fostering culture, continuously improvement. We want our team to feel supportive and empowered to provide the best possible service to our students. On the next slide, we're going into a program for every driver and monitor. And this slide goes a little more into details on our new driver and monitor training program and how it benefits our transportation team, and it is not one-size-fits-all approach. It is designed to meet the specific needs of different team members. First, we have our new hires training. This is a foundation for our newest drivers, brand-new drivers just got their license, and monitors. It provides them everything they need to get started, become the best for the business. We're talking comprehensive training, vehicle operations, safety procedures, student management, district policies, and the whole nine yards. We, we want to set them up for success from day one, giving them the tools and support they need to excel in their roles. But the training doesn't stop there. We're implementing train, retraining skills, um, skill enhancement. You might see us, we're out in an area that we're doing skills with, um, drivers. And the part, the program offers focused support existing employees to refine specific skill addresses and areas in need and improvement, reinforce best practices, the insurance, our entire team maintains the highest standard of safety and professionalism. Finally, we have begun holding an ongoing professional development workshops. These workshops open, all staff provide regular opportunities to refresh existing skills. Team, or excuse me, learn new techniques and expand their knowledge on range of irrelevant topics. Think of at continuous training and a way in everyone to stay informed and prepared for this situation much encountered. The commitment, ongoing professional development demonstrates and dedicates the providing the highest quality transportation service for our students and investing in our team so they can continue to provide the best possible service for our children and our students in the district.
Just in closing, I just wanted to share some of the emails that we've been receiving. These are just little pieces of some of the emails that we've gotten so far. Um, and I think that they just say, say it all. It's just a powerful, um, reminder of the impact that our team has, um, within our community. If you read some of them, they say things like, she comforted the students and ensured their safety, or one driver made, um, my son's entire day. And I just wanna say that I'm honored to now be their supervisor and that my team's dedication is truly inspiring. And I'm excited to see what we're gonna publish together in the future. Anybody have any questions?
Two questions. Um, for the training programs, i- i- do you guys, is that something you guys developed yourselves? Or do we buy it, like, do we buy programs that are, you know, established elsewhere?
We bought one big program that covers from beginning to the end.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So a new driver would get it from start to finish, and then we break up pieces depending upon.
But we, we, you, you teach.
Yeah.
Stuff, okay. And then is, is it op- option, I mean, obviously for new hires, they have to do that. But for, for experienced people, is it optional or?
So right now, we're holding workshops that are optional.
Okay.
We've, we've been doing different ones, um, like two different ones, I think, every month. Um, people can sign up and take them as.
And, and how's that going? Are people signing up?
Got a lot of good feedback from them so far, so.
Yeah, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would say for, uh, for Nicole, Colleen, and Linda, I think it's a, it's a wonderful presentation. We welcome you all and so forth. So thank you. I'm sure, we're all sure that you're gonna continue to do an excellent job, and we appreciate it. These are our most valuable assets, you know, being a teacher in a classroom for twenty years, just being in a classroom with them is one thing, but put them all on a bus and make them on a road with some of the crazy drivers out there. Just wanna say we appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, seven point four, our twenty five point one budget update with Dr. Roman and Ms. Tyler.
Good evening, board members, community, uh, and guests. So this evening, we're gonna continue our budget presentations. This is budget presentation number three. And so we wanna just quickly go over some of the, uh, points that are sort of, uh, the pillars of what we're presenting. Uh, first and foremost, the key drivers, as was mentioned previously, is, uh, preservation of programs, uh, making sure that we improve efficiency and effectiveness of the services and programs we are offering, ensuring financial stability and sustainability, and being mindful on the impact of our, uh, taxpayers. And so, uh, with all of our endeavors, um, we are starting to condition ourselves to be asking, does this support our mission? Does it support our vision? Does it support our blueprint for excellence? And so we are working through that as we, uh, engage in this process. And next year, um, as we start to look at the return on investment on many of the initiatives that we have throughout the district, services, supports, um, and the budget is, is no different. And so each element of our budget, um, is thoroughly examined. Um, we're intentional about the initiatives that we're putting forward, and we wanna ensure that it best supports, um, our students, uh, for next-gen, uh, learning. And so, uh, in terms of the twenty five, twenty six school, uh, year budget, um, what we're trying to do is maximize, uh, the resources that we have. And so today, you'll see, uh, a, a number of funding streams that we're tapping into uh, to be able to best leverage those resources. And our intent is to really, uh, ensure that we're not, um, we're not placing an emphasis on any taxing, uh, to our residents that we don't need. So we're really looking at our, our expenditures to make sure that what we put forward, um, is what we need. Um, and so the focus of those initiatives are gonna be, again, to enhance, um, our instructional practices, providing professional development, uh, making sure that we're meeting our, uh, mission and vision, which speaks to innovation. And so, uh, uh, previous slide shows you just the blueprint for excellence, uh, that we engaged in and the pillars around that, student experience, well-being, safety and security, finance, facility, food service, and future planning, as well as family and community engagement and highly qualified staff. And this leads us into the budget development, uh, which, as we, uh, as I previously mentioned, we're already in, in the fa- in the different phases of it. Uh, and I'll let Linda speak to some of the upcoming, uh, presentations.
So, uh, for the budget development, um, we're still moving along. We're not quite to the end yet. I would say we're, uh, between the third and, and fourth, or maybe between the second and third bullet. Um, I am gonna talk tonight about the tax cap, um, but we don't have a recommendation at this time for the actual tax levy. Uh, Dr. Roman and I are gonna bring some more information to the next budget presentation to talk about that. Um, so I would say we were, uh, between, uh, calculating the estimated aid, um, and the tax levy limit and determining the budget gap. So until we know what our actual state aid is, uh, the legislative budget is not due until April first. And until we decide where we will set the tax levy, uh, we really can't determine the full amount of the budget gap. But being, uh, as far as along in the process as we are now, we have a pretty good idea. It won't, uh, change much from what I'm gonna show you tonight. Um, listed here are just some things that we still, uh, have to wait for. Um, I did, uh, calculate the tax cap, uh, and we'll show that to you. But because we don't have a decision on where the tax levy will be set, it's still, uh, listed here. As I just said, we're waiting for the state legislative budget to be approved. Hopefully, it'll be on time by April first. Um, we are working on our, uh, service request for B O Cs. You'll notice that there are some, uh, B O Cs, uh, changes in the presentation, but we are not finished, uh, filling out those service requests. So there'll be changes before, uh, the next presentation too. Um, we are waiting for information about the health insurance rates. Uh, next week, the, uh, D H I C, which is the Dutch's Educational Health Insurance Consortium, consortium will meet to, uh, vote on the rates. And, uh, those will be finalized, uh, at that time. So at our, uh, next meeting, our next budget presentation will know the final cost or the, uh, actual budget for health insurance. Uh, that's really important for us because it makes up, other than payroll, the health insurance makes up the majority of our budget. We spend over twenty million dollars a year on health insurance for our employees and retirees. Um, so just a one percent change in, in the rate could be about two hundred thousand dollars for us. Um, and also, uh, we, um, have information tonight about the administrator, administrative, uh, budget requests. So here's our tax cap calculation. It's still marked draft only because it's not the final, uh, tax levy that we are recommending. Like I said earlier, we wanna talk about this at the next bu- budget presentation. But listed here is a comparison of the two thousand twenty four, twenty five tax cap calculation. That's the current school year and what we're, uh, estimating for next year. So we do have to file this information with New York State by March first. Um, we tell them what our, uh, maximum amount of the tax levy is. And then after the board, uh, sets the levy, which it would have to be at that amount or lower, we would go back to, uh, the New York State website and indicate what we're actually setting the levy for. So, uh, just a few things I wanna point out here. I'm not gonna go through it line by line. You know, sometimes, uh, some people might wanna do that, Carl. Like, good for you. So I just point out some of the key factors. We always start with the prior year tax levy. Um, and then we, um, can take, uh, an exclusion, basically, or add to our tax levy the amount, um, of new properties, a, a factor based on the amount of new properties in our district. So that's that second line, it's the tax-based growth factor. So this doesn't, um, indicate, um, any changes to existing structures, but if there were new homes that were built, um, or other new buildings, um, anything that comes onto the tax rule gets figured into here. So that's would bring our subtotal for our, uh, tax levy from the seventy point eight million up to seventy one point four. Uh, we do have, uh, the ability to, uh, add in, uh, payments or pilot payments from the, uh, current year. It says here prior year, but it's the twenty four, twenty five year. And also down at the bottom, you'll see we have to subtract off from the tax levy, the expected pilot for next year. Uh, you'll notice there is a big change between twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six. Um, that's because phase one of Bella Field, um, that tax, uh, pilot started this school year, um, as did the Saki Brewery here in Hyde Park. Um, next year, the tax, uh, the pilots, uh, for next year is a little bit lower, uh, seven hundred eleven thousand than it is this year. And that's because one of our, uh, pilots is actually, uh, paid in full and is being put onto the tax rules completely. It's the Taylor Manufacturing Pilot, uh, facility in Poughkeepsie. That's in, in our school district. Um, and then also, we, uh, add in here our exclusion for the capital tax levy. Um, a few years ago, when we, um, had the, uh, vote for the science lab project at F D R, um, our capital exclusion was about one and a half million dollars per year. And the board, uh, voted at that time to increase that to about one point eight million. Um, it was in, in order to accommodate that project, so we've been at that level since then. The one point eight million is actually the difference between what we pay in debt and what we receive back in state aid for that year. Uh, there are other factors other than our own debt service that go into the capital, uh, the capital exclusion. Uh, most, most importantly is like a capital exclusion that we get for payments that we make to B O Cs. So you'll notice in twenty four, twenty five, our exclusion was actually over two million dollars for capital. Uh, but one point eight of that was from our own debt service payments and aid. So with everything, uh, calculated here, it shows that our tax, uh, levy increase for next year, uh, the maximum amount that we could levy, uh, without going, um, over, without needing a supermajority vote, would be two point four three percent increase or a one point seven million dollars. You might remember that at the last meeting, I had projected our, uh, tax levy increase would be about two point seven, uh, percent. Um, it's slightly different because I hadn't considered the fact that we had planned, uh, with our financial advisor to use some debt service, uh, monies to pay off some of our debt this coming year. Um, you'll see that on the next slide, but that actually brings down what we could levy a, a little bit. Because we can't, we can't tax the taxpayers for that portion of the tax, um, the debt service if we're using other funds. So, uh, this slide here shows the, uh, revenues, uh, for the draft preliminary budget. We did add some more categories just so we could show the, uh, breakout. Um, in the past, we've shown taxes, other revenues, state aid, and fund balance appropriation. So we just broke out some of the categories so we could explain that a little bit more. Um, on here, I'm showing the taxes, assuming that we would set the levy at the maximum amount. Uh, like I said, we don't have to set the levy there, and we'll talk to the board about that at the next meeting. Um, but assuming that the tax levy was set at the maximum, um, we would, uh, then also have these other revenues to support the full amount of the budget. So this budget here, our revenue budget, has to match the expenditure budget of a hundred and twenty six point six million. Um, we're showing, uh, other revenues of three point six million. That includes, uh, interest income. We earn over a million dollars a year in interest. Uh, the main reason is that we collect our taxes in the fall, and we use that money to pay off bills throughout the school year, but we have all that time to invest the funds and earn interest on it. And we also have some billings to other school districts, uh, mainly for students that are from other school districts that attend schools here. Uh, the school districts where they originate from are responsible for their, uh, education, so we can bill those school districts. And then for state aid, I actually broke it out into, um, regular state aid and then the state aid that we get for building and transportation aid, because that's the aid that's used in the debt service calculation. So, uh, foundation aid and some of the other smaller aids, uh, would amount to forty one point six million dollars in the governor's proposal. Like I said, that's going to change when we get our, uh, legislative, uh, budget in, hopefully, on April first. Uh, the state aid, uh, for building aid and transportation aid for bus purchases is about four and a half million dollars. So that money is used in that, uh, calculation for the total debt service. And then also this year, we have the planned use of debt service of six hundred forty thousand. Uh, this is something that we planned when we were planning the thirty five point seven million dollar capital project that we're working on now. It was to help us stay at that one point eight million dollar local share for debt service. And then, uh, in order to make the, uh, overall budget balance, we do have to appropriate some fund balance like we do every year. Um, it would be about three and a half million dollars under this scenario. Um, if we change the tax levy, then everything else stays the same. The rest of the, um, or the other categories for revenue and our expenditures stay the same, we would have to increase our fund balance appropriation, um, appropriately so that we still have a balanced budget. So overall, in a scenario, the budget-to-budget increase would be five point six million dollars or four point six eight percent. Uh, this slide here shows the, uh, draft expenditures. Uh, these categories are, are pretty much the, uh, same that we normally, uh, show in all of our budget presentations. Again, you'll notice, obviously, the salaries are the highest amount. Um, that's the way it should be in every school district of, because we do have to pay for our staff to educate students. Um, so we're looking at a four point two percent increase for salaries. Um, B O Cs, right now, we're looking at about a Um, BOSI's right now, we're looking at about a five percent increase. Uh, like I said earlier, we're not complete uh complete, we haven't completely uh finished the service request for BOSI's. So that number will change. Uh, we are looking at decreases for contractual expenditures, uh some equipment and transfers to other funds. Um, our supplies are increasing slightly. That's mainly due to uh cost increases, not because we're adding a lot of uh different supplies. It's just inflation is uh causing the prices to increase. Uh, the debt service payments, you'll notice they're quite uh higher than they are last year. But like I said earlier, when we apply the aid and the debts in the transfer from debt service against that, it still brings us to the same local share of one point eight million. And right now, our estimate for employee benefits is thirty-seven point two million. Uh, that includes health insurance, but all other benefits, uh payroll taxes are considered a benefit. Uh, the district does have to also pay the New York State Teachers Retirement System, the uh local uh employee retirement system uh for all of our employees that are participating in those pension systems. And we also have other uh benefits like uh payments to the different unions, welfare benefit trusts and also uh Medicare reimbursement for C S C A. And there's some smaller costs just for uh third-party administrators for those benefits too. Uh, that number definitely will change in the next presentation because D HIC will be setting the rates next week. Okay, sorry.
All right, so.
I should be the one driving.
So uh. So we're going to talk a little bit about the uh budget request that came in. The board had requested um, some information in terms of the rationales that were provided for each. And so again, we use our our rubric, um, our rating scale, as well as indicated in terms of each item. The prioritization um of each of those items, critical, important, desirable. Critical meaning it's a requirement, we have to provide it to students. Important meaning it's not a requirement, but it's important to continue to provide um the program, level of program and services that we've provided thus far, maintaining uh that for our students. And then desirable is sort of things that we we want, um, that there is some some validity to the request. However, it's not one of the top two um uh in terms of the prioritization of indicators that we provide. And then of course leveraging on grant funds. So um, what what we'd like to do is kind of go through each of these, um, so that uh the board has a background of the rationale. And again, we provided a summary of the rationale. What we asked each of the administrators to do was to provide the uh rationales that are aligned to our uh strategic plan, uh excellence, uh blueprint for excellence. Uh, which are the pillars they were aligned to and then the return on investment. And so what, how are they going to monitor the impact of these uh initiatives? And so uh each of these are, we're going to go through them. Uh, but I'll let Linda just talk a little bit about the funding streams that we're using for each of these at this particular moment that we'll we'll be.
Thank you. So in the first column, we show the actual request for the items from the administrators. As always, the first item that's up there is not a request, it's just a function of the budget. Every year we have uh teachers that retire and we replace them with uh people that are usually less experienced, so they earn less money. So there's always an opportunity to find budget savings there. Um, however, for next year, we're uh toward eleven retirees, teacher retirees. We're planning to replace our ten teachers, not all eleven. Uh, that would result in a uh savings, a budget savings of five hundred thirty thousand, one hundred six dollars. And that's why it's in the uh second, the second, well, the third column, the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-six budget. The other columns are for the grant, the stronger connections grant. Or there are some things we'll see on the next page that we're actually recommending that we buy in the current year rather than add them to next year's budget.
The one thing I do want to recognize here is that some of the items that we are um adding to the budget will be evaluated on an annual basis, meaning that if we have something that we put on the budget for this upcoming year, doesn't automatically mean that we're going to continue that for the subsequent years. We really want to get into the business of evaluating the return on investment of these initiatives, collecting data to determine whether or not these items continue moving forward if the need arises.
And it's also important to point out that anything for salaries includes benefits. So when there's a full-time uh position being recommended, the cost that you see up here is the salary plus the benefits. Both health insurance, payroll taxes, pension costs and workers' comp costs. Um, so uh at the request of Mike from last, or last time, we did organize it. So the first slide and and part of the second slide is with all of the state uh the segments and the salary amounts. And then we have uh a non-salary request after that. So we uh did receive a request for a full-time E N L teacher. Um, we are uh including that in the recommendation for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So the total cost with the benefits is a hundred twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The next two items were for support staff, for a school secretary, uh ten-month position at FDR. And then also a student records assistant, a twelve-month position at Havlin Middle School. Um, at this time, we are not recommending that we uh add those items to the budget. And uh Dr. Roman has been working with the principals on uh finding ways to make sure that the work is done and allocated appropriately. Uh, so you'll notice, I I want to point that out because those are not distributed to one of the other three columns. So if you look at the bottom, it's not going to add up to the uh total request. So we left the amount there with the salaries and the benefits to show what the request is, but didn't distribute it to any of the other areas. Um, we also have a request for uh two full-time uh LPNs. Uh, we are going to approve this request, but those funds will be added to the stronger connections grant. It will not be part of the general fund budget next year. Uh, we had a a request for a half-time groundskeeper uh to become a full-time groundskeeper. So the cost with the additional salary plus um adding benefits for that position is forty-four thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. Uh, we are recommending that be in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Uh, also, we are adding a part-time hourly se- uh senior custodial worker at Havlin, or I'm sorry, Hyde Park Elementary School. Uh, this cost listed here would be the district share. Uh, we already have an agreement with uh our tenant at Hyde Park Elementary School to pay for uh some of that cost, uh because the uh custodian will be servicing the students in U P K. Uh, we do have a request from the Transportation Department to uh change a a position from a bus driver office assistant to a school bus dispatcher. Uh, this was an equity issue. Uh, we have two people in the office that are feeling for each other. Um, and they're not there at the same times of the day, so when the school bus dispatcher is not there, the bus driver office assistant actually does that work. So to be fair, we're recommending that we change that position to the same title of school bus dispatcher. The cost for the district would be ten thousand seventy-seven. Um, we do have a a vacant position that's budgeted, is a microcomputer technician at the high school. Uh, we're recommending that we eliminate that position, but then add uh two stipends, one for the high school and one for the middle school to do some of the work. Um, we did get a request for uh math, a math A I S teacher. The request came through by uh reducing three uh teaching assistants. Uh, but when we looked at some of the data, the decision was to uh approve the request, but but through a reduction of two T A's. So there's still a s- uh savings to the district for that of five thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars. Um, and then also in the stronger connections grant, we're approving the twelve uh M T S S stipends. Uh, we did change the P V I S stipend request from eight to twelve. That will also be in the grant. And also to name high advisor stipends at the high school. Um, the high school also requested an auto mechanic advisor stipend and a quiz bowl advisor stipend. Uh, those are approved and would be in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. On this page, uh, we have a couple more salary items. Um, it's for an assistant wrestling coach. Uh, this is really based on participation and need for that uh program. Uh, we approve that to be added to the budget for a cost of three thousand nine hundred fifty-five. And then two unified uh bowling coaches uh were approved too. Again, even though um the stipends are low amounts, there's still some benefits associated with them, so these amounts are the. So in total, the salary and benefit changes, there's actually um the request would have been a savings for the budget of forty-five thousand, one forty. But uh for the items that were accepted into the general fund, uh we're realizing a savings of four hundred five thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars. Um, and then we're adding to the stronger connections grant, two hundred two thousand, thirty-seven. The items listed at the bottom of this slide are non-salary items. Uh, most of them, uh, we are uh adding. Well, the first three we're adding to the current year budget. Uh, we noticed that we had some equipment funds left over and we can use those funds to buy the wrestling match mats, the uh scoreboard for the F D R gym and the seventeen digital pianos that the music department requested. So those uh requests have been approved for purchase, but not to be added to next year's budget. We're going to use money this year to pay for those. Uh, the Transportation Department had recommended new routing software. When we actually looked at what we could remove from the budget to accommodate that request, we realized that we had uh have a savings of thirty-one thousand. The reason is that we also had a budget for uh uh for some, uh, it wasn't software, but I think it was for the actual tablets. It was equipment monies that we had in transportation. Uh, the new routing software that we're looking at would also provide tablets, so we don't need a separate budget for that. And also the routing software would be uh paid for through BOSI's and we receive aid back on that. So the savings overall to the budget for the new routing software would be thirty-one thousand. And then finally, we have the student supplies. Uh, this is something that had been in the ARPA grants and the fiscal stimulus grants. And we had uh determined at one point, I think two years ago, that we would keep this in the budget. But because it's not in the general fund budget yet, it's shown here as an addition. So uh overall, we had a request for uh budget changes of increasing the budget by a hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-three. Uh, for all the changes that we're accepting into the budget, we're realizing a savings of two hundred seventy-one thousand. Uh, two hundred and two thousand of that is through the grant and forty-three thousand is being paid from the current year funds. So we'd be happy to answer some questions before we show the other slides.
Just out of curiosity, what determines like a stipend amount? Like, so like auto mechanic is eighteen forty-seven, but a quiz bowl seventeen, and they seem like very odd numbers and they're different for like.
Yeah, some of those, they're they're in the co- in the contract with the teachers union. Um, a lot of, we haven't had some of those stipends, but we keep them in the contract and roll them over year to year. I'm not really sure, um, perhaps at the time that they were added, uh, it was based on uh the agreement.
The contract or something that says quid quiz bowl advisor?
Has all the lists of the um Schedule J appointment.
I I assume that's the same for coaches as well.
Just there, we would have to work with the union on the unified bowling coaches. So the amount that's in there is is based on an assumption for the amount of uh time that would be spent on 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 that program by the two coaches.
And typically, it's it's evaluated based on the roles and responsibilities of that particular sport or or activity. And then looking at comparable um advisors or or other appointments that may mirror those some of those responsibilities. If we had to determine uh a new, like a new.
I have a question. I should probably know this. What is an M T S S stipend?
Good question. It's the, it's the multi-tiered system of support uh stipend. Wha- what we're doing is right now, under Melissa Lawson's uh leadership and her team, they're building the foundation so that we have a a pure M T S S model, providing tier one interventions. What everyone does in the classroom across the district. And then as you move up the the pyramid, the interventions become more intense. But the hope is that by the time you get to the very top, where it's the most intensive, you have the least number of students. Right now, we're looking at inverted pyramid, where we're providing a lot of supports to many students. Where we need to really build that strong foundation. And part of the role of the M T S S um individuals coordinators will be to help analyze data, help develop um uh plans to be reviewed and monitored on a on a regular basis every two weeks. Uh, coming up with um uh interventions, uh typically pre-referral strategies that we can do before a student may be referred to uh special education. So that system is being built out as we speak and a lot of that work is taking place. And the role of those coordinators will be at each of the schools to be able to do that work. What we don't want to do is put something else on a teacher uh when sometimes their plate is, well, most of the time their plate is already full. And so we want to make sure that when we put these structures in place, we're compensating um teachers to be able to do some of those extra duties.
So it's for teachers to do those extra duties?
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
Sorry to follow up on that. That's a very good point. So the M T S S, I'm just wondering, is it open also to the assistant principals? Cause a lot of assistant principals do this because the assistant principals, they're the ones who know the kids, they deal with the referrals, they deal with the family. I know a couple of assistant principals or M T S coordinators, yours truly. And so uh, is that also open to assistant principals first?
That's something we'll we'll take a look at, but at this time, you know, we really haven't made that determination.
Yeah, it's it's a lot, what a lot of districts do, because again, those assistant principals, they're working every day with those students. So when, you know, when I have my weekly M T S S meetings, we go over not only the discipline, but the academics, it's just a thought.
Yes, and we don't have assistant principals in every school.
That's true. That's true.
So I just wanted for clarification, everything you've presented to us, except for some shuffling duties for the secretaries, are you're recommending be funded? Is that all of the requests or we're not seeing requests that you're not?
No, no, no.
So this, so this year, it looks like we're able to manage.
I think, I think, I think that that was uh initiation uh for my first year.
So that's, it's our life a little easier.
Usually it doesn't have much of an impact because of the uh retiree.
Well, last time you showed the the stipends for M T S S and P V I S were twelve. And I had asked, what what's on board today? Are we, are we moving from zero to twelve or a hundred to a hundred and twelve? What 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 is the number we're moving?
How many that we currently have right now? Zero.
Oh, so we're going from zero to twelve. These are all new stipend positions.
Yeah, it'll be two for, two allocated for each school.
And and I assume that the roles and responsibilities of of the expectations of these stipends are clearly defined.
Yes, we 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 would definitely have to do that so that we can um present it to 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 the um unions.
Okay, and then next question is, I know last budget season, there were, there was a lot of debate about the L PNs. And we decided last year not to do the L PNs, but they're here. Like, so what changed? Like from from the last, you you know, less than a year ago, you know, we said no, but now they're back here, so.
Yeah, I'll start to, I'll start to answer that question and then I'll turn it over to Melissa Lawson. So uh last year, we looked at the data that was presented and I believe there were four that were being requested to be kept on. I believe we kept a few of them, uh, but we didn't fund all of them last year. And so what we decided to do was, let's keep track of what, wh- what's the need um across the district. And so data was being collected throughout the year to determine that there was an increase in the number of visits, an increase in the number of of medical conditions that require uh more intensive supports. And so uh based on that information, what we were able to do is ascertain that there was an additional need for those L PNs this year, based on the data as opposed to last year. After reviewing the data that was collected, we determined that um we were able to provide the supports necessary based on what we um, the supports that we had in place. So I don't know, Melissa, you want to add anything to that?
Say that, you know, last year, when the decision was made to move forward with two L PNs, we made a commitment that we would continue to monitor whether that was sufficient. And what we found is that those two L PNs were split between two elementary buildings throughout this year. And it was challenging to make sure that the um students were getting what they needed throughout the day, um, because uh student needs vary throughout the day, depending on the health issues that are present themselves in health offices. So when we looked at the types of visits we were seeing in the elementary buildings and the kind of care that was required. and the kind of care that was required. We determined that we really needed to bump up our LPN support to make sure that our students had the safest and most, um, healthy options available to them.
And so now each elementary is going to have an RN and an LPN. That's the.
That's, that's what the proposal would be, yes.
So that would mean that if, because as it is now, if you have a nurse who's out for something and you can't get a sub, right, we're looking at a building that's not covered. So now that should take care of leaving a, uh, a nurse's office on soup, you know, without, without a qualified person.
Technically, we cannot expect an LPN to be a substitute for a nurse. A nurse has to be on call and be able to supervise. So, um, you know, that's, we would still identify an RN to oversee and check in with an LPN who was in a nurse's office alone. Um, so, you know, I just, I want to make sure that, you know, there's certain regulations around that. So you have to follow those.
But at least somebody would be in the building. Think that was the argument last year in favor of it. Um, I just, uh, last couple of years, we hear you add a math AIS teacher and reduce to teaching assistants. In the past, what has happened, those teaching assistant positions weren't filled. So it's not like we're losing somebody. We were just losing a position. Is this the case here too?
That's correct. Yeah, through attrition, we're able to, uh, continue that plan that started, uh, a number of years ago. Um, through previous superintendent to, um, address the, again, talking about the MTSS and that pyramid. Addressing the top tier, uh, needs of students, cause typically our AIS students are, are needing the most intensive supports. So having a certified teacher has really shown some, some improvement in terms of our math, uh, gains with that model.
I wanted to say a word of support for wrestlers for the new wrestling mats. I was a wrestler in high school, so forth. Not Dan Gable, but, uh, there's nothing worse than an old wrestling mat and so forth. And, uh, after, uh, you know, running and sweating on a mat for ten, twenty years, you know, when it's time to get rid of the match. But I just want to switch gears a little bit for the, for the records management. So it's not being recommended to move forward with the records management. Because I was reviewing and I went down on slide thirty two, which you're coming to. You know, we had just hired a new full-time, you know, school information systems data person. And now with, with so much automation and AI, things like that, at the school level, usually, you know, that person can kind of create reports for each building, which are just run by people in the office. You don't really necessarily need somebody to know how to do that, just how to run the report. So I'm glad to hear that that's not moving forward because we do have that full-time person, who I'm told is doing very well. So that's, that's something that I would certainly support. And then just in general, um, the microcomputer, it, I think it's smart to go with stipends for the microcomputers. The only question I have is, as Carl was saying, is the availability, not just the availability of employees for a full-time position, but when you offer a stipend. Um, you know, are there people who are interested in the stipends? And then when they take the stipend for a computer position, um, are they going to be available when teachers need them? You know, I used to be a teacher and I do stipend as a tech person, but I was only available certain periods of the day. So, you know, is there availability? Will this still cover the still, you know, the needs throughout the day?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good question. Uh, in terms of what we, the current structure and the reason why we're moving away from that is we have a microcomputer technician really doing computer exchanges. Right? So you have this high skilled person doing a low technical skill, you know, role. Um, in the sense that they're not, you know, they're not fixing, they're not, you know, so that's not the need, is more of the exchange, making sure students have access to the, the techno- technology when it's not working. And so we strongly feel that going this route is cost-effective, more efficient. And, um, you know, we'll be going through the process to interview, uh, individuals to make sure that they, you know, there's someone that's going to be available to provide that resource to students, uh, during the times that they need it.
Good, thank you. Still have more. Um, so explain to me the, the, the stuff that you said, we're, we're coming out of current year budget. So that would normally, just, we have extra, you know, from expense savings and instead of putting it to fund balance, we're going to buy this stuff out of this year's budget.
Yeah, we actually have in facilities and operations, we have additional equipment money that's not, um, going to be spent this year. It's money that was added to the budget by our former, uh, director of facilities. And, um, we haven't had a need to spend it. So we're going to, we've readjusted the budget for next year, that equipment budget. But because we have those funds available, we're going to use it to, uh, purchase.
Transfer to the code.
Yeah, it has to be through equipment, but we can transfer them to other equipment codes.
Is that, is that the total amount of the extra money from that line or?
There's, um, there's, I think there is a, a hundred and twenty thousand in that, um, in that equipment line.
That's not being used?
Previous, uh, director had recommended, uh, replacing some of the vans. Uh, we didn't do that is without a director, uh, that wasn't looked into. And the request for next year was only to replace one of the vans.
But, but the extra hundred grand that, that will roll into the fund balance unless you find?
Yes, unless there's something else that comes up, like, um, that we're unaware of. There's an emergency for the end of the year.
Yeah, that's typically when, when there's unspent, you know, funds, it just goes into.
I've never seen it where we actually used it to buy something like this in the current, you know, a request for next year we're buying this year. Right? So.
Actually, because we don't have a director, I made the decision we weren't going to spend that, something else. So when we were looking at ways to, uh, find some savings in the budget, that's why we did that.
That's it maybe for me for this mo- this, this go around.
So I just want to quickly go over, uh, the requests. So the ENL teacher, as you saw in this evening's presentation, numbers are increasing. Um, thankfully, last year, the board approved mid-year, uh, one point oh FTE for, for, uh, an ENL teacher. That was, um, consumed by the, the needs that have arisen, uh, because of new students coming into the district. Looking into this upcoming school year, wh- what we're realizing is that there's a need to open additional sections at the high school, uh, because some of those class sizes are already maxed. And as a result, what we need is, uh, the ENL teachers to be able to open those, uh, additional sections into the next school year. Um, we are looking at clusters, um, as, as Margaret had alluded to in, in Violet. Uh, and some other spaces, those are things that we are examining. We want to examine not just the number of, of Ls, uh, but what are the specific supports that they need? Right? Because as you learned this evening, they're not, they're not all at the same level. You know, some are more proficient in English than, than others. So those are things that, um, the team is working on so that we can really analyze, um, that as we move forward. In terms of the, uh.
I was just wondering, so, so some of these, I think you already talked about. So like the LP, I think, you know, you talked about, yeah, just bypass the ones. I think you talked about a bunch of these already. I think.
All right, so are we good with the groundskeeper?
Um, I, I don't know if you talked about this one yet, but.
I think Linda has.
Yeah, I didn't say more. So, uh, we currently have, uh, a half-time, a groundskeeper position that's vacant. Um, it's been hard to, uh, fill that position. The request is to, uh, make that position a full-time, uh, groundskeeper. And it would allow us to provide, uh, more coverage at the high school. The plan would be for the, a person to work, uh, later, like an evening shift from Tuesday to Saturday. Um, so that there'd be someone at the high school when our students are there using the fields or when we have outside groups there too. And because it would be, um, you know, in that time, there might be the ability to get some more of the, uh, basic work done, like of the, the mowing and re-racking and things like that that are harder to get to during the day.
So when you say evening, what kind of hours are we talking?
Uh, I don't remember exactly. It, um, I, I believe it's until, I think it's like a later start from like two, maybe two until uh, nine or ten. It must be two until ten. Right now, uh, when we do have outside groups using our facilities too, we're paying overtime for a custodian or another member of facilities to work also.
Any questions on the previous one? Okay, so this one, this was the part-time, uh, hourly senior custodian. Uh, we've been able to meet with abilities first to calculate a certain percentage um, of the costs associated with this position, um, because they are cleaning some of those spaces that they occupy. And so we've been able to utilize some of those funds in addition to, um, what we currently have to be able to, uh, put this position forward. Uh, again, I think it's, what, in terms of the amount, the cost is.
The cost to the district is about eleven thousand, eleven thousand six hundred, uh, the, that's the additional cost because we're also going to experience some savings for subs and overtime. And then the cost, uh, that the tenant is picking up is about fifteen thousand per year.
This position was spoken, uh, about, um, this evening. Uh, can you see that?
Great. That's angry.
I think you already, you already talked about.
Talked about that one. Uh, we just talked about that one with, with Carl's question. Uh, MTSS, we talked about the PBIS is the same thing. Uh, it's just focusing on school-wide behavior, expectations and supports. The AIM High, uh, stipends, um, this is, uh, I, I, I believe we spoke about this early on in the school year in terms of bringing AIM High on. It really is, um, expanding what was in existence for just boys, um, last year. Uh, with the Brothers App Program, the AIM High now encompasses both males and females. And so they have a much larger, um, group. And this will help, um, support some of the, the higher, the higher number of students out there servicing. Uh, this is a, a club, um, request from the high school. Uh, again, when we talk about student experience, being able to engage students in more programs, um, such as the Winter Circle Project, um, those, this is going to be able to create those opportunities for students.
This is independent of the Winter Circle.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a, was there a need, like, uh, a lot of times when a new club comes up, it's because students have looked for it. And I know we have students who go to BOSI's for auto mechanics. Is this is, this is separate obviously from BOSI's, but.
When, uh, Mr. Ruel Fender request, he said that there were some students that were interested in the Winter Circle Project that, um, either weren't in the program or it didn't fit into their schedule, but they were still interested in learning about it. So that was the, uh, reason that he requested the, the auto.
Is not, so this is not as in-depth as a BOSI's?
No, it's not like a co- course. It would be an after-school.
But, but still giving students the experience of the technical aspects of working with, with the cars and the marketing and all of that, all of that stuff. Uh, quiz bowl, again, uh, another stipend for an advisor, uh, for this program at the school, uh, for students.
What year was, uh, FDR born?
And time's up.
You're going to be the advisor now.
I don't think so.
I won't be participating. Uh, assistant wrestling coach, we spoke about earlier, uh, in the year. Again, we're only bringing this up because it wasn't budgeted in, during this, during this past school year, something that we added. So we want to make sure it's added. Uh, we talked about the unified bowling coaches, the wrestling mats, scoreboards for the high school, digital pianos. You heard about the, um, bus routing software. It's going to save us approximately thirty one thousand dollars. Student supplies, that's a continuation. It's just moving into the general fund. And then these are the two positions that we're not moving for, uh, we're not recommending.
So you'll, you'll notice even in the two requests that aren't, uh, approved, the rationale is there. Uh, all of the rationale for each item is a summary of what the administrators submitted on their, uh, request.
And, and, like the new coaches, right? We have put that in there, but oftentimes we see where we're not continuing with a, a, a particular program, but we never see that number come out. Just, how, how is that in the budget? Like if we stop a particular sport for next year, do we see like a credit in, in the budget? Or do we just carry, carry that just in case the program stops?
Well, if, sometimes if, if we know for sure, like during budget season, we will remove, um, items from the budget and show that as a budget savings. Uh, but we don't always know, like there might be a sport this year that we wish to have, but there's not enough participation. So we don't have the sport this year, but the, uh, athletic director will request it, have that budget remain, um, in hopes that there might be, uh, the chance to use it the next year or really based on information that they have, that department has, um, because of student interest for the following.
The lacrosse might be an exception.
That's not, yeah, that's still in the.
That's in the budget and then we're looking to modify, to change that to a modified position.
Yeah, so we would look at taking that money and getting some people at the modified level.
Exactly, which would be, uh, a slight cost savings.
So just to circle back just for a minute to the groundskeepers. So what are the duties of a groundskeeper? I think a groundskeeper is lawn, shrubbery, bushes. Is it, is it, uh, plowing? Like, what's involved?
Snow removal, yes. Plowing, they help, they worked really close at the high school. They were very closely with the athletic director. They line the fields, they help prepare for, uh, games, uh, like for the use of the fields, for, uh, outside groups that come in.
For all the sporting events, right, for the people watching at home who might think the sun goes down at five o'clock for most of the year. But it's the athletic events, it's helping with plowing, it's other things. Okay, thank you.
So before we, uh, discuss next steps, I do want to mention, um, something about, uh, the science of reading. Cause that, that was something that, uh, came up during our last meeting. Um, so we had, uh, the opportunity to, to meet as a team to discuss this, uh, further. And I do have to think we have a new literacy innovation team, um, that's, that's being, um, led by both Jessica and Jennifer, uh, Pryser, Amy. Um, this work has been taking place for the past two years. So it's not something that we're just starting, which is, which is great for us because we've had a lot of teachers involved, K-five, um, in this process and we're getting a lot of good feedback from them in terms of best ways to move forward. Uh, just recently, they reviewed five different, uh, programs. Um, and are provided, they actually not only reviewed them, they actually created teacher-led and teacher-created rubric to assess the, um, the five different programs. And so they're going to be very instrumental in providing us the feedback that we need to select the programs. Um, so we're going to be re- repurposing and reallocating some of the textbook funds because we're not going to need to purchase certain, uh, books and materials. So we're going to be repurposing some of those funds. We're going to be taking a look at some of our title funds, which require us to provide intensive reading supports for students through Title One a- and the like. Um, and then lastly, um, the DEHIC funds, if we have any DEHIC funds remaining, we're going to be able to u- utilize some of those funds to purchase the material. So we, we do have a really tight timeframe in terms of when the state has issued us, um, the timeline to make sure that these resources are in place. Uh, so from now until the end of the school year, we're working very aggressively with this, uh, literacy innovation team to make that happen. So at this particular moment for this year, there's no need for us to put anything forward in the budget uh, for next school year. Next school year may be a different, different story.
Do you mind if I say something about DEHIC? So the, the reason why there is money left over in DEHIC, that's the Duchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium, is because this school year, the consortium declared a health insurance holiday, meaning none of the employees or retirees or any of the employers had to pay for the month of, uh, December. So for our school district, the savings was about two million dollars. So if we don't, uh, allocate that money to anything, that goes to fund balance or into a reserve at the end of the year. I don't think.
Board of Education paycheck.
What's that?
Board of Education paycheck.
You get free parking. I think to your point, it's very good to uh, have resources allocated for the science of reading. What I'm hearing, you're probably hearing too, is they're coming next with the science of math very soon, so hopefully, I'm sure we're keeping an eye on that too.
And, and as you can see, um, with, with, under the leadership of Ken Mizel, we are seeing some some improvements in that particular area, and that's because they, they really have a good ear to the ground in terms of evidence-based practices, so we're, we're excited to see where that's gonna continue to go.
Alright, great, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to eight point one, uh, can I get a motion to enter public participation, please? All those in favor? The board reminds speakers that the public comment portion of our meeting is only one item on a lengthy agenda, the segment of public participation will be limited to an overall time of twenty-one minutes. We ask that each speaker be concise and that remarks be limited to three minutes. We expect individuals participating in public comment to speak respectfully and courteously, modeling proper civility and decorum for our students. Please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Pete, I live on Hyde Park. Um, I have a couple of questions, concerns. I don't see anything about the Bella Field gr- um, scholarships, the five, five thousand dollar scholarships. I was wondering if that was happening this year? And where we can find information on how to apply for that, well, not for me, my daughter. And I also was wondering, the Unified Bowling Stipend, I couldn't read it, it went by really fast, is that just a club? Um, because we do have bowling coaches, so I'm, I was just wondering about that and how that would work, but that's it, thanks.
Scholarship is for you.
Anyone else? At this time, we will, well, it was public participation. So, the Bella Field.
Yeah, so with regards to the Bella Field, this is probably like the second or third question that we received in the past couple of weeks about this particular uh, scholarship. Um, in the agreement, um, the scholarship commences when the first tenant in phase two begins, which is the three hundred and forty-four units of the uh, project. And so, um, until then, um, the, the the scholarship is not available, that, that's when, that's when it commences. In terms of the Unified uh, Bowling Stipend, um, my understanding is that it, it is a club, but I'll, I'll, I'll have to get back, just to confirm.
It focuses on students with special needs.
Oh, okay, I'd go and read it fast enough. Okay, okay, awesome. I'll say with Bella Field, they kept floating twenty twenty-five, so that, that's why people are asking questions. That was, that was the year we were told it was gonna start, so. I just wanna clarify it, I understand why people are asking, cause I was waiting for it too.
Alright, moving on to nine point one, Borbs, Board Subcommittee Reports and Professional Development Updates, any, uh, let's see, at least uh, policy met, any policy updates?
So we, at, so the Policy Committee, um, the, we actually spent most of our time talking about uh, the Student Board Representative, we met with Liz, um, and talked about how uh, process could change so that it could include more people who want to be in that position, to give them the opportunity to do that. Um, so I guess what was agreed upon was that, uh, students would submit any, any junior going into their senior year would submit an application, ki- kind of an application like saying, hey, I want to be considered for the um, Student Board Representative uh, position. And that would go to a panel, um, with representatives from each grade level and a teacher, a history teacher and the principal, um, would at least to make up that board. And they would go through the applications and then select, I think it was three to five students to run on the ballot, and then the election would be held and they would be elected by their, uh, by their peers, by, by the kids in the school, and that would open it up to anybody that was interested in the position, as opposed to just kind of being nominated by by teachers and, and staff.
For, for policy, I had asked about the, just a little tweak in some of the wording with the public participation policy. Is that still on the agenda at some point? This is, that was in there.
It's on first consideration. We have to redo it.
No, no, I know. Any other, uh, no, there are committees, right, so the next one, Duchess County uh, School Boards Association?
Well, we didn't meet, but just a reminder, our next meeting is next week. Um, Bosse's is holding the countywide training for prospective board members. I think we have three members on our board who, uh, our seats are up. So if anybody in the community is interested in that, I believe the dates, two members, two members, I stand corrected. Stand corrected, so the dates are on the district website, so if you're interested, they're, they do a great job, you know, letting you know about the process, letting you ask questions, so look on our website for those dates at Bosse's. You have to contact Jolann because it has to go through the district board.
That's not true.
Okay, that's what I was told.
Well, the, the documents they sent out tell them to, uh, to respond to Kelly Laffin directly.
Okay, cause I was told to respond to your.
Yeah, they don't need to. It's in the packet too.
I'll tell Kelly. And then chats, if we're not talking about anything else, maybe we'll talk about.
Yeah, so I mean, community chat, again, nobody showed up, so.
Well, we showed up. And, and Rick showed up and others showed up, so thank you for those who did show up and so forth. You know, again, that's the open discussion of where we go from here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it during board discussion in the states. Any other committees that are listed here?
The uh, the EV Bus Committee met. I think we took a talk about next steps and what the pro- uh, what the proposition might be this spring. We're gonna have another meeting coming up next Friday to sort of come up with a proposal that we'll bring to the, to the board for the proposition. The one thing, and, and Carl and Linda will correctly, we're not going wrong, we're both here, that uh, I think is worth mentioning to the board is that we, we, we will not be recommending going with the leasing company with Highland Fleets. Um, and I think that's, this is where you, you may have to correct me, and I think that's primarily because they would require an eight-year commitment from us, and we would have to include that full price, the eight-year price on the proposition, which would be enormous and make it really unlikely to succeed, is that fair?
Yeah, I believe that, uh, in order to be approved through New York State, they have to have the lease set to the uh, life that, um, the state would aid the buses on. Originally, it was twelve years. Um, that was the proposal they gave to us recently, and over a twelve-year term, the cost for leasing the seventeen buses would be six billion dollars. In order to go with that, we would have to seek voter approval for that all at one time. Um, for the eight-year lease, it was, I think it was like about between four and five million for that.
So although I, I still like the leasing option, that's just, I think that's just a no-go. Uh, so we will be coming with some recommendations, so. Some number of EV buses and some number of gas buses, I'm sorry.
And was the, the battery, would the EV Committee did, was the battery, uh, issue resolved?
Uh, we talked about it, uh, um, the twelve-volt battery was uh, being drained by the camera. The camera that was installed by uh, Bus Patrol, the camera company that we have through the county. Um, there is a meeting, um, I believe next week with Transportation, Bus Patrol and Monarch Bus Sales to talk about what can be done to prevent that in the future. Um, and right now, they're, they are using the bus, but uh, Brian had identified some issues that he's not sure if it's still related to the twelve-volt battery or the, um, the bus itself, so he moved it from a three-tier run to another two-tier run. Just watch how that goes.
And, and, and are we the only bus, electric bus in the county with a camera from Bus Patrol?
No, um, many of, most of the school districts in the county have the cameras from Bus Patrol. Um, I believe Arlington has some uh, EV buses, they were having issues, but their issues were with their chargers. Um, it's my, that's my understanding, they experienced an issue with the cameras.
It's interesting, I wonder why we don't have that problem with the gasoline exhausts. You'd think they would have wired them in the same, they had to wire it in differently to kill the twelve ladders.
Sure, the alternator probably, I don't know, I'm sure something with the alternator maybe is different than, I don't know. But I, I had the same thought, was why?
Bring it on to the car class.
So just to clarify, move forward with the EV buses, so if they're, if we're going back to EV buses, we have to vote. Is that gonna be part of the regular budget, or is that gonna be a separate vote again for the community?
I, as, I think, I think all bus purchases are a separate.
No, it's gonna be part of our regular vote.
I'm sorry, but it's still a separate proposition, right, but the regular vote, I guess, but the, but the, the other thing is, we, we got another extension, but we need one more extension to get us to, to that vote, and so we're leaning on that as well.
Right, right, yeah, as it aligns as a separate proposition, I think that's great.
Well, I don't know if it'll be a effort from the gas, like if we'll have two bus propositions or one bus, that I don't think has been.
That's, that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about with the Bus Committee too, cause we did get some options from our bond council and our.
Alright, moving on to nine point two, Board Discussion Including Consent Agenda Items. Well, so, Community Chat, right, I mean, the last, at least two have had no participation.
The October. Back in October, I brought it up after there was nobody at that one, and then November was strong because it was the EV bus. But, yeah, so it was at least, at least three that we've had so far.
So I, I would, my recommendation, and we could kind of go around and pull, would be to scrap them, and if people ask for them, we'll, we'll maybe, you know, bring it back, but it's, it's not worth it for us to, you know, come out and, you know, take it, take our time out and just sit there, nobody shows up, and.
Them as issues arise, like when something big comes up, we kind of open it up.
Yeah, so, so, we'll, we'll see, you know, we'll, we'll get, take requests from the community and, you know, maybe we do it a- as needed, right, on, on, on particular topics, right, because we did have a lot of participation when the EV bus, um, topic was, was out there, so.
We tried so many different things, you know, we how we advertised, moving into different buildings, putting it at a time connected to people. We, I mean, I think we've given it a really good effort, but.
Even virtual. So, so, I, you know, but what do you think, keep or, keep or scrap?
I think we've given our best shot, I would say, I would say pause it, pause it, I wanna dump, but pause it first.
Yeah, like as needed.
Yeah, I like the idea of pause rather than still.
Well, I just think that we've said we're gonna have them for this year, and I think what's the next one, March? I know I'm in it. You should finish.
February, March at North Park on the twentieth.
So where is it published that we're having it? Cause I feel funny just saying it's not there.
Well, we're gonna put out on the website that, you know, we're, we're no longer gonna do community chats, if, if you, if you want a community chat, send an email to the BOE at Hyde Park Central School District dot com.
We've only finished this year.
No, I don't, I, I, well.
It's like clear that it's because of a lack of attendance.
I agree, I agree, is, this is where, you know, board members are sitting at a school for an hour by ourselves, you know, I mean, we tried. Like the idea of, we're, we're still here to listen to your concerns. Email us at BOE at HPCSD, and for anybody who's listening, if you list all of our names, you gotta spell them right, because then we don't all get emails, that's why we go with BOE at HPCSD, you don't have to worry about spelling all of our names. Um, and then, y- you know, because I, I just wanna make it transparent that we're, we're not saying we don't wanna talk to people, it's just that, but we've we've heard the message.
Yeah, it's a lot of hours wasted sitting there.
And it's.
And I have to talk to Carl for an hour.
No, I listen a lot.
So I, I vote for, you know, scrap them for the rest of the year as, as needed. Send an email and we will get one on the schedule.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say scrap, I'd say pause or suspend, you know, we could always go back to it again, which is great, we can always pivot that way. You know, we really, we had, having this discussion last year at one point that there was attendance issues at some meetings last year, so I say suspend for now, and, and you know, I just wanna look at this in a positive fashion. Sometimes when people don't show up for these types of things in the districts, that's actually, um, can be interpreted as a good thing, because we saw it was during the time when the mask issue was going on. Somebody mentioned the issue with, uh, the question about the buses. So, you know, with all the communications we're doing, which are so eclectic and great, you know, I think it might be overload for some people, but we always can come back to it.
I'm, I'm fine with just scrapping it all together. Yeah, because, because as, as it just points out, we have a pretty good sense for when there's community interest in talking to us, and we'll hold a town hall, we don't have to call it a community chat, we'll just.
Right, so can you make a note to let Rick know to update the website and say due to, due to, you know, lack of.
We're not doing it because we don't want them.
Alright, any other, uh, board discussion? Moving on to, uh, ten point one, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved, it's.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Uh, moving on to eleven dot one, Capital Project Change Order, space two B, thirty-five point seven million dollars at Havilland, can I get a motion for eleven point one?
So moved, it's.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Eleven dot two, our first, uh, consideration of policies, can I get a motion? Any discussion?
Excuse me, Christine, your second?
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Uh, twelve point one, can I get a motion to, uh, enter public participation?
Second in.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Would anyone like to address the board? Same rules as number one. Alright, seeing no one, we'll close public participation. Uh, thirteen point one, other matters deemed necessary by the board, anybody have anything? Alright, um, no need for a second executive session, fifteen dot one, can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's, uh, meeting? All of the favor? I, opposed.
Yeah, I forgot.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.